Delay once we're actually going.
Okay.
Good morning, everybody.
All right.
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay. We are live. Welcome to the Spokane City Council Study Session for March 10th. And we are testing out some new technology. So there may be some hiccups, please be patient. We're working on this in anticipation of being able to do hybrid in-person virtual meetings once the mask mandate is over. So that's why we're working on it. But we've already noticed a few hiccups, including some delays. So again, please be patient. But we are going to spend the first part and the majority of our session of a discussion on the West Quadrant TIF. And I will, and then eventually we'll get to talking about potential back-in-person hybrid public meetings. But Kevin Freebot, I'm going to turn it over to you.
I could hear Council President, and Council President turned it over to Kevin. Kevin, did you hear that?
I can't, I couldn't hear a thing he said, unfortunately.
Me, correct?
I can, oddly enough.
You can hear me, so.
All right. How about? Kevin, can you hear me now?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, all right. I'll start over. Welcome to the Spokane City Council Study Session for March 10th. We're going to spend most of our time talking about the West Quadrant TIF. And then we're going to spend a little bit of time talking about hybrid public meetings once the mask mandate goes away. And so as a result of that, we are testing out some new technology today to try to figure out how we could have both in-person council members in chambers and people attending virtually, as well as the public. So please be patient as we work through this. But with that, I'll turn it over to you, Kevin.
Great, well, thank you, Council President, members of the City Council. I'm really excited that we're all able to be here and to get together. Today is going to, I'm going to speak incredibly briefly, and really, this is, this is a great opportunity, I think, for the Neighborhood Project Advisory Committee and the City Council to have some good conversation around the West Quadrant TIF. For, for members of the public, just so, just to kind of orient us all, we are talking about the West Quadrant TIF today. It is a tax increment financing district that covers a good chunk of West Central, but also parts of the Riverside and Emerson Garfield neighborhoods. With me today are several members of the Neighborhood Project Advisory Committee. This is an official committee of the City of Spokane that provides input to City Council and to city departments as to the prioritization of TIF funds outside of Kendall Yards. There is the Kendall Yards area. The NPAC, their purview is, is everything outside of that that is within the TIF. And so that being said, I do want to convey our chair, the Neighborhood Committee Chair's apologies, Kimberly Lawrence is our chair. Unfortunately, she has laryngitis and cannot speak. And so in her place, we have the Vice Chair, who will, who will, who's here today, as well as some of the members. So that's it for staff. I'm here to answer technical questions if you've got it, or if you need me to put a map on the screen, I'm happy to do that. Other than that, I'm going to step back and let you folks have a conversation. So thank you again, City Council, for arranging this and having this time for everybody.
Are we, are you expecting, are we expecting the Vice Chair to start off and talk about it, or are you expecting us to start asking questions? That's what I'm.
And I think I lost your sound again. I only got about half of that sound.
Oh, Mike, can you hear me now? Okay. I guess I was wondering how you thought things were going to proceed. Are we going to hear from the, the NPAC members of what they're thinking and thoughts? Or are you expecting us to ask questions of them? I'm not, I'm not sure.
Absolutely, that's, that's up to, to, to the Council and the committee. But I think that that would be a good way to start, would be for the committee members who are here to speak on who they are, maybe, and, and what their, their interest and their, their desire is for the, for the TIF, so.
Thank you, Kevin. I, I'm sorry, Council President, I was, thought that you would be starting off, but I'll introduce myself. I'm Fran Papenler, I am the Vice Chair of the NPAC. Many of you know me, I'm from the Audubon Down River Neighborhood Council. But today I wear, as member at large, one of the members at large of the NPAC. I'd like to actually have people from the committee introduce themselves because of the new council members. So Kimberly is our honorable chair, and she has laryngitis. So maybe go ahead and speak up NPAC, so folks, the council knows who you are and where you're from.
Well, I'll, I can speak just a little bit, it just, I don't know that I could do much more than what I'm giving you. I'll say, this is Kimberly Lawrence, and normally behave in the chair role, but I'm happy, thank you so much, Fran, for stepping in. And I represent the West Central Neighborhood as the primary on the committee as well.
This is Kelly Cruz. I am the resident of West Central, I'm the alternate on the committee for West Central.
I'm Michael Flager, and I am one of the at-large members.
And, and where do you, what neighborhood are you from?
I am one of the at-large members, so I don't represent one of the neighborhoods in particular, I'm just a voting member.
But I just wondered what neighborhood you live in, that's what I'm wondering. Live in, that's what I'm wondering.
Oh, I live in Brockville.
I'm Vicky Munch, I represent Riverside.
I'm Alan Chatham, I am the alternate member from Riverside.
Hey Fran, it's Karen. Do we have anybody from Emerson Garfield?
It looks like Amanda Richardson is our Emerson Garfield person. I don't see her on the line, and we actually have a vacancy for, for Emerson Garfield. I think that might be sitting on the mayor's desk, I'm not sure if we have any, no, no applicants?
Well, we're going to, we're going to be opening that call soon, it just hasn't happened yet. So we do have one standing member from Emerson Garfield. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here today, she very much wanted to be, but the, the time and date just didn't work for her. And then we do have, that is our one open seat, is a alternate for Emerson Garfield.
Well, I will, I will start off by just thanking the council for their time today. Gosh, it's, it's great that we've got a couple of new council members. Again, I've introduced myself, I'm Fran Papenler, and I'm just delighted to be a part of this, of this committee. I'm a Spokane native, grew up in West Central, Emerson Garfield. My brothers and I played and swam at AM Cannon, and so I do have, I must admit, some sentimentality towards West Central. And so I'm just really pleased to be, be part of looking at this proposal today. The NPAC has been busy, we've kind of been flying under the radar, so sort of feeling that way, not that there's anything else going on, but we have been busy educating our, we updated our policy and procedures. We've gotten some education from Kevin, who is our wonderful staff liaison, I don't know what we'd do without him. He's educated us on centers and corridors. We are up current on learning and knowing about comp plan amendments that affect the TIF areas. We're well aware of that, and watch that to see how that might affect things coming in the future. Again, I, we're just wanting to conversa, we're just happy to meet with you, we've been wanting to, and there's, we're waiting, as you know, for the county to come forward, again, backtrack a minute, thank you for approving the amend, the extension, and we're waiting for the county to approve that extension. And we've got a wonderful proposal in front of us from Reach West Central, which actually, they've been collaborating with a lot of entities in West Central. So with that, boy, we're just like, say, we want questions, comments, we want to have a conversation.
So Fran, this is Karen.
Yes.
Want to thank all of you for all your work. This has been a long time coming to get it organized and to get everybody on the same page as far as rules and regulations and how to move forward. So thank you all for serving. There's, there's quite a history with the TIF and with West Central Neighborhood Plan, as with all of the neighborhoods and their neighborhood plans. But as I looked at the proposals, I would love to just kind of have somebody go over the proposals, if we can do that, and then talk a little bit about it, so people understand what is being asked and the benefits of, of these two proposals and what they're going to do for that neighborhood. So if somebody wants to do that, that'd be great.
If it would be too much trouble, I'm happy to do that, Fran, if you'd like me to kind of summarize them very briefly.
Please, please do. And, and I trust that the council has, has had the, has seen the proposal and the summary that you sent out the other day.
Yeah, absolutely happy to do that. So the, the document that was attached to the agenda is, is what Fran is referring to, so everyone hopefully has a copy of that, with, which outlines not only the, the current status of the TIF itself, but also the two proposals. And the two proposals that are currently on the table, the first is a proposal from Reach West Central. Reach is a, a local action group, a nonprofit that operates in, in the West Central Neighborhood, of course, based on their name. And this is a, this is a group of concerned citizens who would like to see some, some of the economic development and growth in West Central happen. And they have partnered, they've done quite a bit of background work, and they have partnered with the Neighborhood Council and with others to develop this proposal for a, what I call a combined design, well, what they call a design and feasibility project. So we're, we're looking at a, an analysis of the various projects that the TIF outlines in West Central, and with a, with an eye towards maybe some preliminary designs, some cost estimation, and a lot of community outreach to determine really what those projects might look like, how they might be implemented. Ultimately, this request is not to physically construct anything, but to do the background work, the planning and the design, in order to ultimately, in the future, come back and, and implement actual improvements. If you look at page four on the packet, you'll see I've highlighted some blue areas. I can see if I can bring that up on the screen very quickly here. And just as a, just as a kind of a background piece on this, the request from Reach is centered around four project areas from the original TIF. And so the, not, not the amended one that was, that was adopted by council that is still waiting for the county to adopt, these are based on the original TIF that was adopted years ago. And so these blue areas correspond to the four projects that are already described in the TIF. And so the proposal from Reach originally was, they were asking for the city to grant funds to them to coordinate this effort. Unfortunately, there's, there's quite a few concerns around procurement and, and state laws far as granting public funds. They've since amended their request, their request now is just, is to do this project, whether it's done by the city or granted as funds to a consultant, or, you know, there's a number, there's a number of avenues. So that's, that's their current request. And these are really around largely streetscape and, and infrastructure and trees and sidewalks and pedestrian infrastructure in this blue area, is what they're asking for. So that's the Reach proposal. The committee has met many times to discuss it. Some refinements have been made by Reach, some additional work has been done by Reach in response to questions from the committee. And that's, that's the proposal that many of us talk about. The second one has come in very, very recently, and that is a request from Habitat for Humanity that for up to half a million dollars to rehabilitate 10 homes in West Central. This one is brand new. The committee has not met on this one to discuss it. We haven't, the city has not really provided much, any input as to how it would work, there's no details really understood yet, it was just submitted. But we wanted to make sure that everybody in this meeting had the most current information. And so, you know, our, our preliminary understanding of this one is that we may not be able to fund it, because it does call for housing, and the TIF doesn't currently allow housing, or at least list housing as an improvement. That's a much bigger discussion that is going on. But those are the two requests that are on the table right now.
Well. Can I talk?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, that's all I have, that's.
I was just going to say, committee members, it would be great to get your feedback on the first proposal that you have discussed in your meetings before of what you like about it, or don't like about it, or how you, if you could recraft it to be more aligned with your goals as a committee. So it'd be helpful for us at City Council to hear from you about the merits, I guess, of that proposal, and whether you're strongly supporting it, et cetera. So it'd be great to hear that.
Kevin?
Yes, sir.
This is Kelly. I know you showed the map and everything, but could you just describe the four projects in line, so everybody gets an idea of, you know, on the ground, without being out there?
Yes, sir. Just very briefly, the four are streetscape improvements around the West Broadway Neighborhood Center. It's basically Broadway, Nash, and Chestnut, it's like four blocks of streetscape improvements, is what the TIF called for. So we're talking sidewalks, streets, trees, period lighting, street furniture, bike infrastructure, that kind of thing. The second project, Chestnut and Elm Streetscape Improvements. So this is Elm, Cannon, Chestnut, it's basically from the bridge to Dean, and that one's similar, it's crosswalk treatment, street furniture, lighting. The third one is the Maxwell and Elm Employment Center. And I'm trying to bring this up while I talk, I shouldn't try to do two things at once, and so it's a bad idea. Let me see if I can bring this up. There we go. So this is the language from the Reach proposal itself. The third one is Maxwell and Elm Employment Center, which is all the same things we've talked about, sidewalks, bump outs, trees, but also water and sewer upgrades, and the hope, I believe, was to support the ultimate employment center's development. And then the fourth is traffic calming around Broadway and Nora, Maple and Ash, and again, sidewalks, bump outs, trees, crosswalks, benches, and bus shelters. So those are the four projects that were described originally in the TIF and that the Reach proposal is announcing, or is hoping to implement. Thank you, Kevin. I hope, Kelly.
It looks like Kimberly has her hand up, too.
Yeah, go ahead, Kimberly.
Thank you. Hopefully you can hear me okay. So I want to disclose first, before I speak, that I am a member of Reach West Central, I'm on their board, but I am not speaking in that capacity here in this meeting. But I, I do want everyone to understand that I am very active in my community, and being on Reach is just one of the ways that I'm active, in addition to the work I do with the NPAC. And then you had asked a question, sir, about what were, you know, the, our impressions of the, of the proposal. And I think the thing that I'll say, have been on both sides of this equation, is that I am very interested, I'll guess it's a step back, NPAC did a lot of work around their policies and procedures to ensure that public engagement was a priority in projects that were attached to TIF dollars. It is very important to the NPAC members, based on the work that we've done, to do improvements to policies and procedures, that there are no surprises to how NPAC instrument financing affects the neighborhoods that it is designed to benefit. And the efforts around that, you know, the NPAC can't necessarily control, you know, I as a chair of the NPAC can't like call the meeting to have a pub, you know, public meeting or, or anything like that on behalf of the city. But we can, you know, we hope to encourage the engagement with the neighborhood, and not just neighborhood with a capital N, as in our friends in the Neighborhood Council, but in general with people who live, work, and play in the neighborhood, and how they would like to see these improvements that are permissible inside of our ordinance be really put into action, given all the changes that have happened since the TIF has been realized many years ago. There's a lot of things that's happened and changed in the West Central Neighborhood. One of the things that I'm most excited about, about this project, is that it allows for, and puts eyes on the public engagement process, and, and ensures that folks, not just from West Central, but from these other neighborhoods so close to us, Emerson Garfield and Riverside, also can talk about how, what they would like to see in the West Central Neighborhood, because I truly believe as a representative of the West Central Neighborhood, that's what's good for West Central, is good for the neighboring neighborhoods, and it's what's good for the City of Spokane. And I think the way to get to that good is to really seek the input of people who live, work, and play here. So that's the part that I think I'm most excited about and exploring in this project. The projects are the projects, they are what they are. They're, you know, we're not, we're not proposing changes to any of those things, it doesn't look like Reach is interested in doing anything other than what is technically listed there. But getting that public engagement process started, I think is going to be so valuable to making these projects something that don't become points of tension in the neighborhood as some other projects we've seen have been, right? We've certainly seen that in the history of projects the city has engaged in, there's always a group that bubbles up and now is mad that Monroe looks the way it does, or whatever the case is. But we really are hoping and striving for making sure that, you know, we can avoid, as best we can, that type of tension with all the parties involved.
I, I would like to add to Kimberly's, that I've, I've observed Reach really strengthen collaboration with other entities in the area, such as the Community Center, the Neighborhood Council, the West Central Development. There's a couple entities that are working in West Central, and they, they've really pulled that together. And none of these things that are on the list, they, they coincide with the neighborhood plan, and we really are supportive of any project that is congruent with, with the neighborhood plan. I'd like to hear from, if other members of the NPAC want to make some comments.
I have a question. I'd like to know if there are funding sources for all four of these projects.
I think that part of what we're hearing, there's kind of two different tracks going on here, because we do have about a million dollars in the account for projects in this area. And so one, one point of this proposal is, okay, if we're going to spend money on projects, are these the four projects that the NPAC wants to advance? And then the second thing is, is this the mechanism to advance them, to spend money on planning? Because obviously, if you spend $300,000 in the engagement process, then that's $300,000 you don't have for the building process. So those are really two different questions, I, I think, and I'd love to, again, hear from you all about, are these the four projects at the top of your list to advance? And secondly, is this the best mechanism to advance them? And I don't have an opinion on either of those things, so that's why I really want to hear from people.
So this is Kelly Cruz, I'm former chair of the West Central Neighborhood, and I was in charge of the neighborhood planning, the last planning, 2012. I'm just going to give a brief, quick oversight history of planning in North, West Central. In 1991, we created our first neighborhood plan, and shortly after that, we created a subarea planning in the Maxwell Elm Employment Center. That had to do with the native project remaining in the neighborhood that led that effort to retain them in the neighborhood, to expand their footprint. That was identified as an area for improvement in the 91 plan, as well as the 2012 plan, so we're talking 30 years there. The other one was the streetscape on Broadway, which originally showed up in the 91 plan and also was reinforced by the 2012 plan. So those two projects have been waiting to have some sort of attention by the city in shovel readiness for 30-plus years. For my money, as a lifelong resident of the West Central Neighborhood, the best economic impact, in my estimation, would be improvement of the Maxwell Elm Employment Center, because that sits close, right, about a half a block away from where two and a half blocks of railroad tracks and beds still exist, which means that's a contaminated area, would be hard to find private investment until the public investment cleans that up, or we find a, a way to do that. So through the process, we may find or identify a way to do that. But those two projects have been in the queue for 30 years and have not been addressed, so.
Great. Thanks, Kelly. And then I see Chatham has his hand raised. Chatham?
Excuse me, I just wanted to give a little bit of kind of context for some of the meta kind of stuff going around, that one of the challenges that NPAC faces is that we don't instigate any projects, we're kind of at the mercy of organizations and agencies, whether they be governmental, nonprofit, whoever, whoever, who wants to kind of propose something to us, and then we kind of see whether or not, how that fits into our thing. And so we kind of have a balance between, you know, do we save money because this isn't, you know, maybe super top of the list, because we think that some bigger project is going to come on later that's going to be, you know, a more effective use of money, versus, you know, we want to be a responsive agency to, you know, the needs of our community, and actually, you know, get money on the community. And I think that the Reach proposal in particular is a good fit in so much as it, you know, like Kelly was saying, you know, these are projects that have been on the, in the queue for a long time, but they also fit under the current legal authority of things that we can spend money on, which has another, been another challenge, where, you know, before the NPAC stuff gets changed, I mean, those changes get approved by the county, you know, our hands are fairly tied into, you know, actual shovel-ready projects that we can put into, you know, most of the money is reserved for planning, that sort of process. And so I think this fits well into like, hey, we have a million dollars, we can spend some of it right now and finally get some money flowing. But then, you know, we have this balance of, you know, we have some changes that we'd like to see through, so we can actually take this money and put it towards, you know, some, you know, actual construction costs for certain things. And so that's just kind of an interesting balance that we face.
Great. Thanks. Other NPAC members on these four projects and this mechanism of kind of accelerating them through planning and community engagement? Yes, Vicky?
There's been some resistance, I think, to any prioritization on these projects. But I feel pretty strongly that the Maxwell Elm really needs a lot, and it, it probably needs a lot more than the streetscape to solve the problems there. So I personally would like to see the projects separated and prioritized in moving forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Shretton?
So just a couple of things, for those of us that have been here a while, I remember probably one of my first neighborhood planning, or maybe it had just finished, was Emerson Garfield, and if some of you were here, I think Lori was here, maybe, that, that whole Monroe Street discussion was really born out of that neighborhood plan. And so when I look at these, I think of West Central, they've had two neighborhood plans, and it's really time to start doing something positive in West Central. I know that West Quadrant, and Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think some of those TIF funds were used, were able to be used in Emerson Garfield around the Monroe Street project. It also means that other, you know, there's parts of Emerson Garfield and parts of Riverside that can absolutely put together applications or, or, you know, ideas of what they want there. But for now, I will just say that I think it's time that we move forward with some of these funds that actually benefit West Central and get some planning, you know, future planning and looking at areas that do need improvement. future planning and looking at areas that do need improvements. And I look at partnering with Habitat for Humanity. I don't know how many homes I've been to and celebrating after Habitat's been done with their work in the homes, but they do amazing work. And I just, the last thing I'll say is, the last time we voted on money that was going to be used out of the TIF was for a bridge. And it was the, what bridge was it, Kevin?
It's the north span of the pedestrian bridge in Riverfront Park.
Right. And that was a spirited debate the night that we all voted on that or didn't vote on that. But I would really like to see this move forward and give this neighborhood the confidence and the trust that the city is going to support and follow up and assist them in moving some of their planning forward. It's been, as Kelly said, 30 years, and I think it's time. I think these are both really good projects.
I'm going to go Councilmember Wilkerson, and then I'll come back to you, Fran. Councilmember Wilkerson?
Thank you. Thanks all from West Central. So I just need a little bit of clarity here. So we amended the TIF in 2020. So is that the TIF we're working under that has not been agreed to by the county? Or are we addressing resources on the prior TIF that was agreed to by the county? So point me in the right direction on that first.
It's the prior, I think the current interpretation from our city legal is it's the prior TIF language that the county did approve the uses on. I think we still want to have more discussion about that, whether or not we could use it for housing or not. But that's what this is operating under the prior language.
Okay, thank you.
Fran?
Sure. Just real briefly, and Kimberly's got her hand up too. I just want to kind of reiterate, I do support in terms of if we were to prioritize, the whole thing, the whole thing that the TIF is about, NPAC is about, in making recommendations, is economic development. And boy, we've got some real low-hanging fruit there along Maxwell, even though it's one block off of the Cento, which is the official dividing line. But if we could get some businesses started along Maxwell, clean up the brown field, and, you know, businesses like Made With Love Bakery, that's a prime example of what can be done. And I had a walking tour with the West Central Neighborhood Council Chair recently, and she showed me all the houses around that bakery, and Dutch Jakes, that have been rehabilitated. And it's just, it's awesome. It's exciting. So I really think we need to focus on that economic development. And we've got the money, we've got the plan, we've got the collaboration for the neighborhood voices. So the NPAC is ready to, after this meeting and next month, make it a formal recommendation. So Kim?
Thanks. Kimberly?
So I want to just clarify that all of the projects that are in the current version of the TIF that we're working off of, all of the public improvement projects that are listed there, like the remaining ones are in West Central. Like, this is kind of the rest of the list. Like, this is kind of it for the test. This is everything that's left that hasn't been addressed, the items that are listed there. Also, I agree, economic development is incredibly important. But economic development can take many shapes and forms inside of a neighborhood like West Central, which is incredibly diverse. And all of the activities that are permissible inside of the TIF, as it's designed today, were all being to be contributing factors to economic development and improved economic development inside the West Central neighborhood. We have kind of had this conversation internally inside the NPAC, you know, how, you know, help us understand, you know, how can, you know, putting in better lighting someplace make a difference for economic development? Safe neighborhoods improve people's desire to live, work, and play there. And so all of those pieces and those projects were included for a reason in that TIF. And it is my opinion that all of those projects should eventually be completed. And as it comes to planning and feasibility, there can be some efficiency created by doing that planning all at once to understand and to lay down the roadmap for what needs to happen over the period of many years in West Central after what, quite frankly, has been years of being otherwise ignored for these projects, as we've talked about 30 years, right? So I understand the opinion of divesting them and separating them out. But I feel like because we're not talking about prioritization of implementing the projects, that is a different discussion that should happen as part of this feasibility study. We are just talking about doing the planning and a cohesive, collaborative process all at one time to determine then how to prioritize, because we wouldn't be able to do them all at once anyway, right? And then prioritize from those conversations with the neighborhood which ones to put first, second, and third.
Thanks, Kimberly. Councilmember Bingle?
Thank you. Where do our talks stand right now with the county on them adopting the ordinance that we passed in 2020? Are those talks warm, cold? Where are we at on that?
Non-existent currently. I believe, I don't know if it was a, I don't know that they sent us a letter, but the message that I got was that until council put in writing that they wouldn't apply the longstanding utility tax against the county wastewater treatment plant, that they weren't going to sign it. So.
Okay. Then I guess my, I have another question here. Thank you for the answer. My next question would be the $300,000 that would be spent on this feasibility study, is that money that would be better spent to just implement one of these projects? Is that money that would be wasted in any way? And should we just, you know, get the input from the community on their prioritization and then implement these projects?
All right. Looks like Kimberly might have an answer for you. Go ahead, Kimberly.
Hoping so.
Well, I don't know if I have an answer. I have an opinion. So we'll do that. So it is, I think, a strongly held assumption here that there is, that the TIF could not possibly fund all of the work that needs to be done, and that we are supplementing what we hope will be other funds from other sources when it comes to implementing the projects. Getting matching funds for a project, as we did with Dutch Jakes, is a good way to help use these TIF dollars when the project is shovel-ready, getting put into place, like actually in motion. It is much harder to come up with matching funds for a feasibility study, which is why I think that this is happening the way that it's happening, which is to get the discussion moving, start to prioritize which work has to be done first, and then get that low-hanging fruit if possible, all of those pieces. But it's much more difficult, my understanding, limited education here, to get matching funds for a feasibility study versus what we did with Dutch Jakes, which is like, hey, we have a thing that needs to be fixed. Let's put some money into it, because they've already got a plan that's like, ready to go, which is how we used some of those dollars in 2019, 20, I don't know, something recently.
Okay. Thank you. My understanding is that the TIF expires in 2032. Is that correct? So we basically have 10 years to?
No, it's, the original TIF expires then, but we passed an ordinance extending it after 2032. That's what we're waiting for the county to sign on to. So the TIF could continue the way it was set up originally, because the county signed off on the original TIF. And the little bit of the question that we're wrestling with is, if we want to add affordable housing to the terms of the original TIF without, not talking about the extension, can we do that unilaterally? Or do we have the county sign off on that or not? So it's kind of two different conversations about that.
Okay. Couple more questions, if I could. How many MFTEs are in that TIF boundary? And do we know how many of those are going to expire? And are those in our projected revenue?
I do not have a list or the number handy, but I can find out for you how many contracted MFTE projects are in the TIF. We do account for them when we're attempting to come up with possible impacts to long-range revenue growth. We do know, you know, if they're contracted, we know when they come off the rolls. And when they come off the tax exempt rule, they do have quite a large instant positive impact on the TIF. But I can definitely find out from Terry Stripes exactly how many are in there. I don't know off the top of my head.
So I guess I just, in the projections that we were given here for the dollars that are going to be coming in 2021, 2022, we didn't get any projections after that. Do we have projections for when those fall off and how that's going to affect the amount of money going into that account?
I don't have that ready-made, but we could do that kind of analysis if that was necessary. It would be a, it's, there's an element of guess in there, because we don't know always which projects are going to come in in the future. For instance, the Falls Project is in the TIF. If they, you know, if they amend the project and part of it is MFTE, or it's more units than we thought, that can have an impact, and sometimes we don't know in advance. But we can, we could make an educated guess. It would take time to generate that, but we could do that.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
And one thing I'll just add, Councilmember Bingle, is in 2032, the division between Kendall Yards being separate from West Central Emerson Garfield will change. And that will be a huge, and so it's a way, you know, 10 years out there. But that will be a huge change of available revenues for these surrounding neighborhoods to Kendall Yards. Kimberly, I see your hand up, and then I see Chatham as well. So I'll start with Kimberly, and I'll get to Chatham.
Just a point of clarification, and I apologize if my day quill, adults brain missed this, but the RCW already approved the allowable expense for permanent affordable housing. So as far as TIFs in the state go, and I understand there's more to watch here and more discussions to have, but I didn't hear anyone talk about that. We talked about the ordinance, changes to the ordinance, and things that are happening related to the project list. But permissible expenses related to affordable housing, that was approved, I think, in 2020. And I didn't hear anyone mention the RCW part, so I just wanted to throw that in there.
Well, I think, so there's two things. The first thing is, when they approved that in 2020, it turns out there was a gap in the language, but that is getting fixed in this session right now. So that will be fixed. But I think the distinction that we're wrestling with is, state law now authorizes to include affordable housing as a permissible project in your local ordinance. But because our local ordinance predates that, it is not included. So the question would be, are we exceeding the authority of the local ordinance? And does the county have to sign off on that? So it's definitely permissible for an ordinance, but whether or not we can retroactively go back and say, oh, we're just going to graft it on without the county's permission. And frankly, I don't think that we've gone to the county and asked them that, because that's a little bit of a different issue of what they were resisting the extension. It's, you know, doesn't apply to the extension. So there's probably some room to do that, but it hasn't been done yet. I'll go to Chatham, and then Kelly, after that. Chatham?
Just to circle back a little bit to Councilmember Bingle's question about kind of using the funds for, you know, more visible things. You know, with these projects, like the planning step is going to be, going to have to be done at some point, if the city's going to be involved. And so, you know, this, using this funding in this way, you know, it's not super sexy, but it has the benefit of, you know, as Kimberly was saying, you know, this money isn't, you know, it's hard to find, hard to find money for these specific kind of not sexy points. And so this is, you know, an excellent opportunity to kind of get that out of the way. And so that, you know, it is more, you know, it's going to be part of the process anyways. So it is still a, this is a good vehicle for it, I think.
Thanks. Kelly?
Yeah. And just to your question, Council President, if you look back at that 91 plan and that subarea plan, and also the 2012 plan, it's mentioned in that document and by city planning, that additional planning around that Maxwell Elm Employment Center needed to be looked at. So that's already documented in city documentation and by the neighborhood. So I'm just throwing that out there, that, you know, it just never got done or addressed for lack of funding. But now we have the funding, as Kimberly mentioned, for planning and feasibility. So that is an area to start, I believe.
Thanks. And I was just going to mention to Councilmember Stratton's point, back when we considered the pedestrian bridge or not, one of the challenges was, that I heard from neighborhoods, was that the administration who was offering that, they said, hey, that's shovel-ready. We've done the planning and whatever. And the neighborhoods were like, well, you haven't done the planning for these other projects that we really would like to see. And we sort of sent a message like, well, you need to get your project shovel-ready, and then you could compete with something like the pedestrian bridge. But there's been a shortage of planning resources to do that, because we could make the argument that city planners should be doing this planning that Reach is talking about, and getting things shovel-ready, and then saving the money for matches for construction and things like that. So you could make that argument, but as a practical matter, it hasn't happened. So I'm very sympathetic to, all right, we have control of these dollars, we can use it to get the planning. Our planning staff has been understaffed for many years. They're starting to get back up to capacity, but there's no predicting what the priorities will be for their department. And this group, NPAC, doesn't have any influence over those priorities. So I totally understand that. But that is a little bit of the tension out there of like, oh, can't city planners invest the work here so we can save the work for construction? But. Councilmember Bingle?
Councilwoman Stratton can go before me. I'll follow her.
Oh, sorry. I didn't see your hand, Councilmember Stratton. Go ahead.
To add really quickly, and Kelly can probably count the years, but as long as I've been working on this project, the city has always come back. And as we were looking at membership to this group and spending funds in the TIF, the city has continuously told, at least West Central, that they have to follow and look at their neighborhood plan over and over again. You know, what is in your neighborhood plan as far as infrastructure, as far as streetscapes, as far as, I mean, all of that. So I'm really proud that they've stuck to that. And so these elements really come from not only a neighborhood plan, but also the result of the neighborhood listening over and over and over again to the city saying, if you're going to move forward with using West Quadrant TIF funds, this is what you have to do. This is what you have to follow. And they've absolutely done it. And so I just wanted to add that.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Bingle?
So then the purpose of the feasibility study is to help get these projects shovel-ready? Is that my understanding?
Yeah, yes. I believe, and not just get them shovel-ready, but get them shovel-ready in a way that really reflects the community, what the community wants. I think that's the nexus of it. It's two pieces.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. I do hear pretty regularly from people that they don't feel as if the city is actually listening to what they want and following through on their projects. So I think if this helps the neighborhoods get what they want, I think that's fantastic. So.
Okay. Other comments from NPAC members or questions from council or comments from council? All right. Well, I think this was the conversation we really wanted to have. And I hope NPAC members, you heard and felt from us that we really just wanted to hear from you. It was like, all right, this is what you really want to do. And it sounds like you do, and for good reasons. And I'm more clear on it. And we'll continue to arm-wrestle with the county and see if we can get the affordable housing thing figured out so that that's clear, clearly on the table or not on the table, so that we know. And we'll look forward to hearing from you for other projects, because this is 300,000 of a million. So you have other projects. And again, I think just about everybody on the council wants to hear what the priorities are of your neighborhoods. And you seem to be a very representative group, so I appreciate that. So with that, we'll move on. And also, yes, Councilmember Stratton is applauding, and I do want to thank you for all the work. It's all volunteer work. And I know from prior conversations I've been in, in person, sometimes thankless work over there and a pose. So thank you for sticking your necks out and speaking up for your neighborhoods and what you know to be the truth. So thanks so much for that. Let's move to some discussion about city council meetings going in person with a hybrid option. with a hybrid option. So we're still waiting for some guidance on open public meetings, I think, which we haven't gotten. So there's some rules under the emergency orders from the state about how we have to run things. So we're hoping to get some guidance on that, but. Okay. So we haven't gotten any new guidance, but we believe we can meet with the guidance that we have. So the mask, indoor mask mandate is going to expire at 11:59 on Friday, which means next Monday, we potentially could have an in-person meeting. So I wanted to take people's temperature on that and thoughts. We would, I believe at this time, we would still maintain the ability for the public to testify by phone or virtually, as we've been doing for the last few weeks. And they could sign up virtually to testify, or either by phone or virtually. And then we would probably, we would have signup sheets in the Chase Gallery as well for people. And we would, at, at least in the short term, there'd be a paper signup sheet and a virtual one, and I'd get a printout of that, and I would just have to combine them together. At some point, we're kind of dreaming a little bit about having tablets in the Chase Gallery. And so when people signed up, they would be signing up on the computer, and then the list would be integrated. We've talked about, I think I heard from TV5 that for committee meetings, they're hoping that we can start out only a few people in chambers for committee meetings, and then we'll work our way up to everybody who wants to be on the dais for the legislative meeting. But that's just kind of a technical thing while they adjust to this new hybrid technology. And then the other issue out there is potentially using some physical kind of masking tape that we used before to create some social distancing in the audience chairs, which we have done previously. So those are some issues that come to mind. I see Councilmember Kinnear with her hand raised. Go ahead.
Thanks. Really small issue, but I've heard from people that it's difficult to see when their time is up, when they're in person. And I'm wondering if we could have a system such as the, the school district where it's a big clock. And so the speaker can actually see when it's tick, 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 tick. And so the speaker can actually see what's going on. And then you, Council President, or me, don't have to interrupt them and say, hey, your time's up. And they're going, wait a minute. I still have three more minutes or two more minutes, or whatever it is. So that would be my suggestion, if we could look at something where both the speaker and the facilitator of the meeting could see when the time is up very clearly.
Yeah, no, I've seen that. So we can definitely explore that, probably not by Monday. But, but yeah, yeah. So that's a good point. Councilmember Bingle?
Yes, I'm, I'm really excited to get back in person, as I know many, many other people here are. I appreciate, you know, Hannah Lee and Jacoby and the entire staff, everybody working really hard to sort of be working through these kinks right now. So thank you very much. Do we know when we'll be getting that guidance on the open public meetings?
We do not. There's not a, they haven't announced it. We've put in requests to the governor's office to get it. And they have said that they will try to get the information, but they haven't given us a date, time certain when we'll get it. I, my sense from talking to Hannah Lee is that there's nothing that's going to derail us to go in person on Monday. But, you know, I'm, I'm just leaving that, that possibility out there of, of that there might be some condition on it. But it doesn't sound like they're looking at it. I, I could have imagined a couple months ago that maybe there would have been some kind of vaccine mandate to come in person or something like that. I do, I really don't anticipate that, but I, I just don't know.
Yeah. I support the clock, Councilwoman Kinnear. I think it's great for people to, to be able to see how much time they have. And then on the social distancing measures, when, when we have a particularly hot issue, I know that the chambers can get quite full. And if we have certain areas taped off or roped off, or whatever it is, you know, blocked for social distancing measures, if we have a lot of people who are there, do we, do we turn people away? How would that work?
I'm not, I mean, that's why we're talking about it. I'm not, I'm not positive. In the, in the past, there's quite a bit of overflow room in the Chase Gallery. And so, and then people can, the speakers are out there, so people can hear when their name is called, so they can come up and testify. So I, I don't know. And again, I don't know how long we would need to do the social distancing. It's, you know, it's, the cases have been dropping precipitously, and so it might not be. But it's just a, it's just a factor out there. So I think you raise a great point.
The council determined guidelines and not state guidelines, correct? That would be us setting those rules?
On social distancing?
On the social distancing that in?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then lastly, on, you know, I agree with you, I don't expect there to be any vaccine requirements, but if there were vaccine requirements, I would find that to be kind of discriminatory, and I hope that we would, we would push against that as much as possible. So thank you.
Other comments? Questions? Concerns? All right. And just to make it clear that we will have the capability that any council member can appear virtually. So you don't have to feel compelled to be on the dais, but we will now hopefully have the option to be on the dais, which we just haven't had. So.
Sorry, Council President, I meant for the public and not, not for us, if we excluded public for that. I've, I think.
No, no, I, I wasn't talking about us. I was, I was just saying that in terms of being able to participate from the dais, that will be open to council now, is, is, which we haven't, we haven't had that capability for a while. All right. So just a reminder, I think I said it earlier, we, we can't have everyone at committee, at least on Monday. So if you have any inclination to appear virtually, that'd be great if you did for committee. But for the legislative session, we will be able to do that. And what about briefing? Okay. All right. So briefing will be fine. It's really just some further testing at the committee. So that's, so it's just kind of a one-time thing. So if you were going to appear virtually by committee, that'd be great.
So committees going to be where?
Committee's going to be in chambers.
Because in the past, we've had committee and briefing.
Yep. But we're not set up for that.
All right.
Technology-wise.
Okay.
And we are, just so you know, we're all, we're all, you know, we have some joint meetings with Park Board coming up, and we do with Plan Commission. So we're trying to figure out how we would do that in chambers, or maybe they would be virtually, we would be in chambers. So we're, we're wrestling with those things.
So, Council President, are you giving participants the option?
Let's see.
For our committee meetings, are you giving the participants the option of being virtual as well?
Yeah, they're definitely virtual. I don't know if we're doing in-person on, yeah, they can come to committee meetings in person or, or watch virtually.
What if they're presenting?
Same. Both options.
Council President, one?
Yeah. Sorry, Councilmember Bingle. Yeah.
I just, again, want to say thank you to Council President, council staff, everybody working to, to get this technology squared away. I think this is going to be really good for the community, for many people who don't have the ability to make it there to the council chambers. To be able to present this virtual option, I think is going to result in a lot more participation and inclusion for folks who can't make it there. And so I appreciate all of your efforts and things that you're doing to make this as easy as possible for people to participate. I think that's really terrific. And yeah, I just, I appreciate that. Thank you for all of your hard-working efforts.
Yeah. No, I think that's going to be a silver lining, is that we will have, you know, I think we had some trepidation about that before, like we'd be overwhelmed or something. And we're like, no, actually, this works just fine. Just one second. I had to check a text message from Hannah Lee. Okay, yeah. So just to confirm, we'll, we'll have our normal Spokane Police Department officer here. But if people feel like we need more at any point, let me know. They can, they can do that. In the past, we've left it up to them. They're doing intelligence work. If there were issues that came up, they put extra people. But generally, we're just going to have the one person. So. All right. All right. Not seeing anything else. Lunchtime. We'll see you Monday. Committee is Urban Experience, I believe, at 1:15. And then we'll have briefing, and then we'll have our, our first legis, I mean, briefing will be in-person for those who want to, and then our legislative meeting as well. So it's going to be a great, great moment. There'll probably be some technical glitches, so be patient. It'll be great, especially, I feel, for our two new council members, and really Councilmember Wilkerson. She only had a brief, a brief time of in-person. Yeah. So it'll be great to have, have you all experience it. And we've got the name, the name boards for new people. And what I'm most excited about is we can do the voting electronically, and I don't have to read everybody's name for everything every time. So that's, that's going to be my silver lining for me. So, okay, we're adjourned.